Call the meeting in order, stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for July. First, we will open up for citizens' comments via the phone. Oh, yeah. Thanks, George. George, please, roll call.
Commissioner Baraco.
Here.
Commissioner Guardioso.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Michael Pierce. And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners' meeting will be held in hybrid format that allows for in-person attendance participation by members of the board as well as the public. The public may participate during citizens' comments by dialing 571-748-4021 and entering the PIN number 3571690. Again, it's 571-748-4021 and entering the PIN 3571690. You can unmute your phone by pressing star six. Please state your name and address prior to making your comment. We'll have this open for two minutes. Okay, please let the record show that there's no citizens' comments via the phone. Do you have any citizens' comments for in person? Citizens' comments, are you here to make a comment? Have any comments or question for the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you want to go to the microphone? So you would give us your name, address, and phone number for the record?
My name is Ed Karpinski, I live at 418 Christine Court, of Chichester, with my wife and daughter for the past forty-five years. I, uh, phone 610-197-3761.
Go ahead, what's your comment?
Um, the only question I have is concerning the millstone paving in the fifth street. Call Mr. Guardioso, but he didn't call me back to address the question. All I'm concerned about is who's responsible for the notice to the residents of the fifth ward concerning the paving and millstone.
So, I'll let Mr. Guardioso respond.
Mr., I did call you back. I left a voicemail. I said, please call me back if you have any other questions. I said, the reason why they put the posting for the no parking was because they were going to pave the street. You had a concern about your vehicle being parked on the street? I called the township manager, I let them know. I called the police department, I let them know. Prior to milling the, milling the street, we went to the house, we knocked on the door, and an individual had came out and they moved the car. So, I think I covered all my bases.
Well, the only problem with that is maybe the person who was watching our house did. We were on vacation, three hours away.
Correct.
We made vacation reservations a year ago in advance, paid for the advance in full. Then, when that person called us and said, there's a notice in your mailbox, your car is parked on the street and it's going to be towed at your expense. We came home, a week early, and we lost that week, and we paid.
Right. Mr. Karpinski, I'm not aware, I, I, I apologize to you that you had to go through that, but I did call you back. I have it right here on my phone, if you'd like to see the phone number that I called. So...
Yeah.
I, I don't, I...
I wish you'd call me back.
I, I did. And I believe that they post the street a couple days before that they do it. So, there's really, there's no way for us to know when people are going on vacation.
This summer, it wouldn't be logical to imagine that people on vacation, possibly away for the whole summer, if they have a house in the mountains.
Right, but, but please know that I called the police, I called our township manager to let them know that you were on vacation. I didn't want, I didn't want your car to be towed at your expense. That's what I told both of them. And we went down there to make sure that that didn't happen.
Do you want to know who came out and moved the car?
I have no idea. All, all I know, I got the report that an individual, it was a Penta, I think it was? Uh, was it, was it a Penta? The vehicle, the make of the vehicle, was it a Penta?
1996, uh, Creed, the Grand Prix.
Grand Prix, okay. I'm not, yeah, so...
So the township was responsible for the notice? What's the only question I have?
We put the notice, the police department puts the notice on the street a cou- go ahead.
The contractor was responsible to put the notifications, their pamphlets that are, um, notifications that have their letterhead on it.
He can't hear you. He can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I knew it wasn't here. The contractor is responsible to put out notifications. I can tell you that a week beforehand, the, all of the schedule was put on the website and some other social media so that residents were aware ahead of time. The contractor is responsible to put those notifications out forty-eight hours prior to the work being done.
There we go.
Forty-eight hours. For the mere reason that if we put it out too early, it gets lost in the shuffle. People forget about it. So, we found over the many years that we've been doing this, the best thing to do is forty-eight hours. It's still fresh in people's minds, et cetera. I can tell you that there was another case and, and through the police department, we worked that out as well. Happened yesterday. So, unfortunately, as Mr. Guardioso said, we don't know who's away or not away. We made every effort to notify at, in, in many venues as we can. It's been reported at our meetings that the contract, where the contract is and the status of that contract, and, and unfortunately, you just, you happen to get hit with the vacation time, or on the vacation time.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
You have a contract to name up.
I have Damon.
Again?
A.F. Damon.
Damon?
D.A.M.O.N.
Damon?
Damon.
Oh. Thank you.
Mr. Karpinski.
Can I have an approval of the minutes from the June ninth, twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Consider a motion affirming the Board of Commissioners' position that Upper Chichester Township will serve as the grantee for the Upper Chichester Live area.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As of now, thank you.
Just that is for their RACP application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Mr. Neary will read items seven through ten.
Thank you. Consider a motion approving the trash refund list six dash twenty twenty-two.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can, consider a motion approving the real estate tax collector refunds in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and three cents. So moved.
Second. Aye.
Finally, consider a motion authorizing the township secretary to advertise a budget meeting for Monday, July twenty-fifth, at twenty twenty-two, at seven PM. So moved.
Second. Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitaker. Item number eleven, like to consider a motion ratifying the hiring of Amy Rupertas for the position of full-time administrative assistant permit coordinator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve, like the board to consider a resolution authorizing escrow release to James Montgomery for a project known as twenty-three sixty-six Thomas Avenue in the amount of one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
This is correction, that's two years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number thirteen, like to make a motion to consider a resolution authorizing a le- a escrow re-release to James Montgomery for the project known as twenty-three sixty-six Thomas Avenue in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents. Oh. Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Montgomery, if you're listening, I apologize. Aye. Item number fourteen, like the board to consider a resolution authorizing an escrow release to Zachary M. Galante for the project known as Galante Auto Sales LLC in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and zero cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question. George, what's he not going to do, his addition hour?
No, that was from, there, there were still dollars in the, in the Salvo account that he had that should have been released in twenty fifteen.
I, I, I know he was going back and forth with Pandu and some stuff.
Second. Item number fifteen, like to consider a resolution authorizing escrow release to Vincent Smith for the project known as twenty-three forty Douglas Avenue in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and zero cents.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item, item number sixteen, like to consider a resolution authorizing the escrow release to Tetra Tech, Inc., for the project known as one forty-one Conchester Highway in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Like the board to consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Alliance Forty-eight Hundred Chichester LLC, granting the Board of Commissioners until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, to act on their land development application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eighteen, like the board to consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Alliance Thirty-three Hundred Market LLC, granting the Board of Commissioners until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, to act in the, to act on their subdivision and land development application.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye. And lastly, item number nineteen, consider a motion accepting the extension granted by six fifty Cherry Tree LLC, granting the Board of Commissioners until October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, to act on their subdivision and land development application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gilako, next two items.
Consider a resolution making application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Commonwealth Financing Authority, Multimodal Transportation, Transportation Grant Fund for the Lawhead Avenue Streetscape Multi-Municipal Project with Upper Chichester Township.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider a motion authorizing the sale of a two oh eight X mark Land lawnmower on municipal bid.
That's the model, though, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Um, my report will be short. The financial reports are available at the office as well as the tax collector's report and the detail for those tax refunds. The police reports are available as well. The only thing I wanted to bring up is that in the next week or two, I'll probably be sending you all an email about the fire incentives. And the things we wanted to clear up is, first off, we can make it retroactive to twenty twenty-one because we budgeted it. Secondly, all payments will be issued by the township based on reporting from the fire companies, and all payments in excess of six hundred, of six hundred dollars or more will be issued at ten ninety-nine. I just wanted to get that clarified so that when we submit it to the, um, fire companies, they know exactly where they stand. That's all I have.
Uh, it's a light night. Um, we, you know, we voted on the extensions. That's part of my committees and, uh, under planning. The only thing I'd like to report on is we did get feedback from the letters that we sent out to the Gardendale, um, uh, community about the parking, and the township is, um, in the process of gathering the information and the data and to see what type of, um, steps we can take to hopefully improve the situations, the parking situation back in the area. Other than that, I don't have anything else to, uh, report on. If, um, somebody has some questions for me, I'd be more happy to answer them.
Commissioner Black?
Um, I'll go with short and sweet also. Um, just still progress on everything I've been talking about for the last couple meetings. Um, the trash route, reorganizing the highway department, uh, their contracts up. Um, me and George are moving forward, trying to get the meeting with the, uh, sewer authority to try combining them with a storm sewer authority. Um, the only other thing I was going to mention, I don't know if you're going to talk about it with your grants, is, uh, the, uh, grant we just got, it was on Action News, I seen it. But, um, last night, yep. Yeah. It was on, it was on at four or five o'clock and eleven o'clock. It was on both. It wa- it was not just us, it was everybody. It was talking about the grants in general.
Okay. Um, any questions for Commissioner Baraco? The only question I had, I know last month you had talked about the sewer authority meeting. Did you get that date? Is it, I thought that means where the...
George is gathering some information.
No, for their meeting, their public.
Oh, that, that meeting, I was saying that, um, Mike DeSantis from Delkor is going to be there.
Right.
Explaining the, uh, tunnel, the big project of.
Do we have a date for that?
Um, second Tuesday of the month or the first?
First, right, that's, I couldn't remember. I know it's a Tuesday at seven, the first or second.
Yeah.
Um, Tuesday of the month. Yeah, while George is looking at it, I'll just give my report. Recreation. Um, again, summer camp is in, uh, full swing. It's a five-week summer camp from June twenty-seventh through July twenty-ninth. We have a total of seven, seventy-three campers, which is phenomenal. Haven't had those numbers in, in a few years. Um, they've taken trips or they have upcoming trips to Killian's Pond and Blue Rock's baseball games. Um, community activities, movie night uh, on July fifteenth at Kingsman, three-on-three, uh, basketball tournament, August fourteenth in Twin Oaks. Uh, the, I think this will be the third annual water, uh, balloon frenzy, August eighteenth in the car show barbecue contest, August twenty-eighth at the World Book Shopping Center. Um, year-to-date in revenue, four fifty-two rec center, forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Program fees, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, and baseball rentals is thirteen hundred. Upcoming this fall, Community Day, October sixteenth, table and treat Halloween. Um, event, October twenty-ninth, the rec bingo, November nineteenth, and the holiday celebration is scheduled for November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. I have a recreation, and last month I did report that, um, Heart and Soul, um, the Pennsylvania, um, the grant for Heart and Soul has been extended through August thirty-first. Me, move on to our professionals', uh, reports. Um, our engineer, um, it's Lisa Potany.
Just to follow up on that, on the Green Light Go grant, we were one of three municipalities in, in Delaware County to get one of those grants, so very happy about that. Seven hundred and one thousand? One forty-three or something?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm sorry, seven hundred plus thousand dollars. That's for the, so people are aware that's for the corridor, four fifty-two corridor improvement and set Chestnut Street, nine ninety-five. Uh, you have a copy of my report. We've gone through most of the report. The only thing that I wanted to make, um, informationally, we've received correspondence from D C E D concerning the watershed grant, and they've asked for information or changes in three items. I sent it back to them. The resolution she had questioned, um, we may have to expand what the de- what the scope of work is, just the description of the scope of work. It's not going to, to change your resolution other than we may have to add that it's two hundred and fifty feet, both sides of the creek and, uh, thirty-five trees, et cetera, in the resolution itself. Um, I don't believe that it, that it needs to be re, um, approved. Re, and I should leave that to the solicitor. Um, I just want to make sure that, that the board is aware of it. We've named it, said it was the Stream Bank Restoration Project, Phase Two, Verge Dog. However, I've not gotten any response back from D C E D. All of the comments were back, were due today, so I got it back to her early in the week, thinking I might hear from her. Don't know whether that's necessary, but, uh, George and I were talking about it. Thought it was best the board, uh, be aware that there may be a slight change in that language. Um, otherwise, we, we've done all of the motions that were necessary this evening, and, um, I'll answer any questions. Oh, I should mention that tomorrow will be the last day of the paving project. The three ADA ramps and the raised, uh, pedestrian crossing still needs to be completed, but as of tomorrow, we'll put together a punch list for the paving portion of, of the road, twenty twenty-two road program.
We have a separate schedule for when they're going to do those items?
Yes, yes. And we'll put a, a notification out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions with engineer?
Uh, just one comment. I, I spoke to George earlier tonight about the eighty ramp on, um, Mill and Chi Avenue. He said that's, that's going to be done at a later date.
That actually is in for the project. It's into Pendot for approval, so we're expecting that to be, be done shortly. Damon's waiting for that permit to do the three, three racks.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. The, well, you have a copy of my written report. We took care of all the action items that were on there. Everything else is in order. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for a solicitor? Okay. Any new business? George, do you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have anything, George?
Uh, all the township reports are on file. Uh, we have a lot of new staff members that we've been working through the first ninety days. We're working very hard to make sure they get all up and running. I think they've all been doing a fantastic job and have added a lot to the office, to the township in general. Thank you.
How many new employees do we have now?
Between promotions and additions, we currently have, uh, like, we're, we're onboarding four employees currently.
All right, any new business? Those two adjourned. Those two adjourned, so?
So moved. The, Mr. Neary moved it.
Okay, second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.